I am ready.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to be here with you today and listen to you. My name is Alexandra Oliver Davila, and I'm here with my colleague, Dr. Lorna Rivera, and we are both members of the Boston School Committee, and we are also joined this morning by the superintendent. Dr. Cassilius is with us. You can find the documents for today's session posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the February 6 meeting link, and we'll also post a link to the documents in the chat. The meeting documents have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the session will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Cabo Verdeano, and Haitian Creole. After I finish asking the interpreters to please introduce themselves, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. You'll click the icon to select your language and in order, your language preference, and in order to access this feature, you must update to the latest version of Zoom, and you can find that at support.zoom.us. Also, we have our newest school committee member, Mr. DeRugio is also listening in, as well as our other school committee member, Ms. Robinson is listening in. I'm going to ask our Spanish interpreter if you could please introduce yourself and also invite our Spanish-speaking audience to switch their Zoom channel into Spanish.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Liz Barreto, y hoy estaré interpretándoles en español. Estaré en la sala de español. Para poder oír esta interpretación simultánea, por favor, busque el icono del globo del mundo en la parte inferior de la pantalla y selección español. Si está usando una computadora o un teléfono inteligente, asegúrese de actualizar la última versión del Zoom para poder oírme en español. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. If I could have our Cabo Verdeano interpreter introduce themselves, and if you could please give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano?
Josiane, I'll be your interpreter for this meeting. Hello, mi nombre es Josiane. Saben ser mis interpretes de Creole para aquella reunión allí. Saben interpretar en simultáneo. Si no se creen acceso aquel servicio line, usó bien un grupo en la parte inferior de ecrán y vota selecciona lengua para Cabo Verdeano. Si usted usa un computador, un smartphone, que atenta a la funcionalidad allí, vota certifica, una vota fosa que la actualización para versión más reciente de Zoom. Vota bien para soporte, punto Zoom, punto U.S. para que la versión más reciente. Obrigada.
Thank you. If I could have our Haitian Creole interpreter to please introduce yourself and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sergio Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. Eh, bonjour. Ma, por, merci a tout le monde qui a participé en la sesión en matin. Et puis moi, c'est nombré les Sergio, c'est moi qui a traduit pour nous. Tout ça nous a besoin dit, nous devons adresser les ma traduction pour nous. Et si nous avons fait ça, na pouvez en globe qui embarcée dans la computer à suivre en bas computer, ou app cliquer la donne, et puis apprécier l'information comment pour entrer la conversation. Moi souhaitais tout mon à bien au bon temps, et puis tout mon à apprendre, participer dans programme ça sans problème, et puis pas oublier moi, les Sergio Santillar. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us today. We are now going to activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen, and I just want to remind everybody, if you could please speak at a slower pace to make sure that we assist our interpreters. So we are here today because our duty as a school committee is to represent the vision and the values of our community. Today's community engagement session is one of the many ways we go about doing that. What we are not here to do today is to address current issues such as school reopening, leasing, and other matters. If you'd like to discuss those issues in the context of our five-year goals and guardrails, this is the conversation for that. If you want to discuss those issues in the context of getting a resolution to a current issue, we have other venues for that, including our regular committee meetings, but to help improve our present, we have to make a plan for our future. So before we start, I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan if she could please put the link to our strategic plan in the chat so everybody can have access to that. And before we begin, I know we are all adults here, but just a few reminders that we have a limited amount of time, and we have a few questions we'd like to ask you with some time limits. So we're just going to ask if you could please be respectful to make sure to give space for others to make comments. We will also have in the chat, if we're not able to get to everybody, we'll collect all of that information and use it as part of frequently asked questions. And then also, we will have a Google form to collect further feedback after the session for people that are here, and that document will also be available for people that are not able to make our session so that we're able to collect as much feedback as possible. So while BPS is making great strides, as you know, there's always room for improvement. And this past spring, we engaged in an extensive community outreach to develop our current strategic plan. Since the completion of that plan, the school committee has selected two sets of measures from the strategic plan. So those, again, come directly from the strategic plan, and we plan to monitor those closely. From the strategic plan, we selected a set of priorities that represent the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do, and we call these our goals. And from the strategic plan, we selected a set of non-negotiable community values that must be honored while we pursue the goals, and we call these our guardrails. We do this not to replace the strategic plan, but to heighten our focus on it, to increase transparency and share accountability for student outcomes. Today, we're excited to share these goals and guardrails with you and hear feedback from you about those. And we are going to move on to the next section, which my colleague, Dr. Rivera, will introduce. Thank you.
Thank you. And good morning, everyone. I'm hoping that Liz is going to put up the slide with the goals. Okay, so I'm not, I'm not seeing that. So should I wait?
Let me just, if you, yeah, if you want to just talk about them, we'll strategize on how, but they should be up.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
So, so thank you all for, for your patience with us this morning. So yes, the goals represent the community's highest need and the highest leverage vision for what our students should know and be able to do. The facilitator, A.J. Crable, helped us select the goals that focus on the following. Number one, early literacy. Number two, achievement for English learners. Number three, goal, achievement for students with disabilities. Number four, critical thinking with math, science, and literacy. And five, career and college readiness. Because the school committee that focuses on everything is the school committee that focuses on nothing, one of the hardest tasks for us has been to narrow it down to only five goal areas. But as we grow student success in these five areas, they will have a significant impact on our students' abilities to be successful elsewhere as well. So Liz, if you could put up a slide with the guardrails, I will also go over the guardrails. As was stated before, the guardrails represent the community's values, and they are non-negotiable expectations that must be honored in all of the school system's work. The school committee selected guardrails that focus on the following. Number one, student voice and family engagement. Number two, community partnerships. Three, equity and opportunity gaps. Four, diverse and effective staffing. And five, social, emotional, and physical supports. We believe when these guardrails are honored, they help create the conditions for student success system-wide. And once the goals and guardrails are fully adopted, as a school committee, we will redesign everything we do to monitor these priorities and focus our work around them. We will redesign what our meetings look like to focus more time on ensuring that the goals are met and that the guardrails are honored. We will focus a greater percentage of our time each month on monitoring student growth to ensure we are moving in the right direction. And we will evaluate the budget on its alignment with these goals and guardrails. We will also evaluate the superintendent based on accomplishment of goals and adherence to guardrails. The community's priority vision, our goals and the community's prioritized values, our guardrails, will be at the center of everything we do as a school committee. So I'm going to have Alex go next. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So for this next section, I just want to let folks know that we have about 15 to 20 minutes for this section. And so with this information in mind, we'll move into this section. And please, again, remember that our intention here is to create a space to hear from as many people as possible. And for this reason, we will ask people, if you could please keep your responses and comments to under two minutes, just so we can have space for everybody's voice. And so this is the first part of three sections, which are divided into 20 minutes each. So here is the first question that we will be asking you. Which of the five goal areas is most important to you? And how can BPS partner with families and communities to accomplish it? So of the five goal areas that we talked about, number one being early literacy, number two, achievement for English learners, number three, achievement for students with disabilities, number four, critical thinking with math, science, and literacy, and number five, college and career readiness. Which one most resonates for you and why? And how can BPS do a better job of partnering with families and communities to accomplish this goal? So I'd like to open that up for folks to share. Excuse me. If you could just raise your hand if you have a comment, and I can call on you, you could virtually raise your hand? Okay, I do not see anybody's hand raised. Is there, is that just me or any technical, am I missing anything from the tech side? Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that I always have a hard time looking at so many different boxes. Okay. So then.
Alex, it looks like, it looks like Peggy has her hand raised.
Okay. Okay. I do not see that, but okay.
In the chat, Lena put it in the chat.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking at the actual, sorry about that. Okay, please, Peggy, feel free, go right ahead.
I'd love to see the committee and the system focus on critical thinking with math, science, and literacy. I think that cuts across all the different populations in our and is something that we, as a school system, should be doing so that our graduates and people in our system, whether they graduate or not, can be contribute to our greater good, our greater society, and so forth.
So you, that most resonates with you, the critical thinking piece?
Absolutely.
Thank you for sharing that. If there are other comments, please feel free to raise your hand virtually, or if you'd like to put it in the chat. Okay, so then I will pass it to Dr. Rivera if you want to move on to the next section.
So for this next 20, 15 to 20 minutes, we'd love to hear again from those who've joined us today about feedback on the guardrails. Which of the five guardrail areas is most important to you? And how can BPS best partner with families and communities to honor the guardrail that you feel is most important? And just as a refresher of the five guardrail areas, I will go over them again. This, number one is student voice and family engagement. Second, community partnerships. Third, equity and opportunity gaps. Four is diverse and effective staffing. And fifth, social, emotional, and physical supports. Which one of, which one of these guardrails most resonates for you and why? How can BPS do a better job of partnering with families and communities to honor this guardrail? So take a minute here, and who will be the first to share? Um. Not seeing.
There's a hand up, I see, from Peggy. Yep.
Peggy, is, would you like to share again, or was that from last time? Peggy?
Thanks. I realize you have to unmute yourself to be able to talk. I think diverse and effective staffing is key. What matters is who's actually teaching our kids. And a top-notch teacher and a top-notch school leader are key.
Thank you for sharing, Peggy.
Peggy, what was the last thing that you said? I'm sorry, Dr. Rivera. I lost you at the end. You had one last sentence.
Oh, I think the, having top-notch teachers and school leaders is key.
Sorry, Dr. Rivera.
As superintendent, top-notch. And I should also add that years ago, on Citywide Parent Council, we have had a parents' agenda, and that's the language that Vivian Morris, one of our leaders from Matapan, termed "top-notch." And that parent agenda is with my papers in the Northeastern Archives.
Thank you, Peggy. I see in the chat that Lisa has shared with us the guardrail most important for her is student voice and family engagement, and when asking for parent input to really be respectful and show progress towards this. And again, sharing that when folks come to our school committee meetings, question, ideas, or concerns are raised, but it feels like nothing changes. Thank you, Lisa, for sharing that. Any others? Don't see. I don't see any hands, but we'll have time later. We can go back. So I'm going to pass it back to our chairwoman.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So we're going to just move on to the next piece of this.
I'm sorry, Alex, was I supposed to continue? Oh, wait.
Nope, nope.
You're good. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. That's okay. So the next piece is just in terms of just having, again, the family engagement, student engagement, community stakeholder engagement, which is so important to us. We'd like to ask you, what's the one thing that you yourself would be open to doing to support our students, and how would you like to be involved in the success of BPS and our students? So asking you directly, what's the one thing that you are willing to commit to that would support the success of our students in Boston Public Schools? And I'd like to ask if someone would be willing to share their thoughts on that? Again, what's the one thing you're willing to commit to? Besides showing up to all these meetings, I know we have a number of people on here who are really, really active at our meetings, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your voice. Okay. We will also, again, have a Google document. If you didn't want to share right now, if something grabs you later, we will have a Google Doc that we will, we're collecting, you know, all the information from all the sessions, and we'll put it in the Q and A. And we'll put that up towards the end. So thank you, everybody, for taking time to share with us today. And just to let you know where we're at, by April, we plan to use this feedback to update the school committee's work plan that will be used to monitor progress over the next five years. The entire goal and guardrail monitoring process will take place during public meetings of the school committee. And here's what you can expect next in the process. We're going to continue to have these listening sessions, and we'll then adopt a work plan for the school committee this spring. We will also post a summary of this community input on our website, so you can see the feedback you provided, and then also how we use the feedback in our decision-making. And if you have more to add, please complete the feedback form that's posted on our webpage, which is bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. And we really appreciate your time today and your input, and I just want to leave any closing thoughts to Dr. Rivera.
Again, these sessions, we hope to have participants in the, sure, we know it's a Saturday morning here. We, again, really to have more participants in our upcoming, because I know I will be also facilitating next Saturday with.
We lost you, Dr. Rivera.
I'm sorry. I'm back. I was just, again, wanting to thank everyone who joined us today. Please do spread the word that we are having other sessions like this. I will be facilitating with Dr. Coleman next Saturday. So again, hoping that we'll have more participation in, at the future, listening sessions. So, so again, thank you for taking the time to join us. It means a lot to us, and we really do want to hear from more folks. So spread the word, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. And again, we have, I believe, another six listening sessions, and we intersperse them to be during the week, in the morning, also in the evening. And we also had two Saturday sessions to try to give different schedules so that as many people as possible could participate. We will, again, be collating all of the feedback, the comments, and things in the chat, which will guide us moving forward in re-looking at these goals and refining them, as well as the guardrails. And before we close, I don't know if there's anything, Superintendent, that you'd like to add or say?
Well, first, I want to thank those who are here today. I think that these are the best opportunities to be able to give feedback and speak directly to school committee members. So I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for having these open dialogues with the community. And Dr. Rivera, I also want to recognize that Ms. Robinson and Mr. DeRugio are on the call, and so really excited about their participation as well. I know we have some of our regular commenters and folks who are always involved on the call today. So thank you for participating. We'll make sure that we work with your team, Madam Chair, to get the word out as best we can with our communications team. I think we'll, I'll talk to Dr. Branson and have him speak to it at the next community Equity Roundtable. But I wonder if, because you attend those regularly as well, if you might, you know, just briefly talk about it, and you and Dr. Rivera briefly speak about it at the Equity Roundtable so that then, because they'll have like anywhere from five to 100 people on that call. So.
Yeah, we can definitely, yeah, we can mention the dates, and Ms. Robinson always attends those as well.
That's right.
So we can definitely mention the dates to let people know. So thank you, Superintendent, for being here. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Thank you to our new school committee member for joining us, and also Ms. Robinson. Thank you to the interpreters, and thank you to the BPS staff that are here today on a Saturday. And most importantly, thank you to the public who's here today, participating with us. Again, we do have many more sessions, and we do have a feedback form that you can fill out on the bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee site. So on behalf of the superintendent, the school committee, and the entire BPS family, we thank you for your time, and we look forward to this, continuing this conversation. So thank you very much. we thank you for your time, and we look forward to continuing this conversation. So thank you very much.